I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, November 20th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, and I am Christine Malik, Paula Colas homesick today. We also have Superintendent Janowski, and I am guessing we will have Matthew Kiflu, our school representative shortly. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel." And we will keep this in at the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. So we will start with review and approval of the agenda.
I will move the agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will move on to information and proposals, and reports and information from school sources, and the superintendent update.
So I'm going to start with a conversation from Craig Holgie and Pam Hupd as we talk about our nutrition services and how we have worked to reduce our negative lunch balances. Just as a reminder to frame the conversation, when I began in Richfield Public Schools, we actually changed the practice of serving alternative lunches to students who had significant outstanding balances. Typically, we spent about $10,000 a year to cover unpaid balances. Some that had actually grown and continue to grow on projection towards approximately $40,000 during this year. And so over that past year, in our board meetings this past spring, we talked about altering that procedure and trying to be, continue to be more proactive to make up the difference in those balances. And so Mr. Holgie and Ms. Hupd are here tonight to talk about some of the work that's been happening. So, Mr. Holgie.
Thank you. And unfortunately, we're quickly diverting from that mission statement because I can't think of much less inspiring than dealing with negative lunch balances and programs. But as Mr. Janowski said, we spent a lot of time over the last few years looking at how do we address this concern of growing debt while at the same time making sure that we're feeding our kids, that we have high-quality nutritional programs, that we provide a lunch program that is inspiring for kids but is also able to be sustainable. And so as the board developed the new policy, which was required under federal guidelines for each school district to adopt a policy specific to that, we contemplated different options around how to deal with that negative balance, making sure that we are helping those students who have the greatest need and have that opportunity where they simply can't afford it, but also having accountability so we have similar expectations across our organization for paying for lunch accounts and things like that. And Pam is here to share kind of an update of the work that we've done over the last few years, the communication that's taken place throughout those three years, and most specifically this way, and then kind of what we're thinking about for some next steps for envisioning our opportunities for creating additional sustainable opportunities and making sure that we have nutrition programs available for all of our kids. So I'm going to turn it over to Pam here for a little bit.
All right. And thank you for letting us give an update tonight. I just want to say first and foremost, you know, the thing that I feel the best about on this topic is that the entire team really came together comprehensively. All of the school principals at each location, and the guidance counselors and social workers. I mean, our plan, we had a plan, but your plan is only carried out if you can implement the plan. And all of the, everybody at all of the schools was really on board with that to make sure that the communication efforts on our part were reaching all of the families so that, again, nobody would be surprised by our new procedure. So I just want to give a shout-out to all the schools. So in school year 1516, we started the school year with, by actually writing, making the decision to write off the negative balances for 1415, which accounted for 28,88191. So all the accounts across the board started the school year at zero, with, again, no meal restrictions of any kind for the students. We then just added to that automating, automated calls one time per week, and we ended the school year at minus 15,13915. So then in 1617, which was last school year, we started the school year with that negative balance, no meal restrictions again, automated calls, emails, and texts increased to two times a week, and then personal outreach to families over minus $50, both from our office and, again, from the outreach team at each school building and many of the social workers and guidance counselors. The meal debt increased, and we ended the year at minus 25,04749. And so then we started this school year with the new approved procedure after Craig was talking about the cross-functional team that worked for the entire school year made up of stakeholders at every level and some Richfield parents. So that procedure was approved on June 12th. So we started the school year, however, with a, again, part of our communication and outreach plan was to use that as just a soft introductory into implementing the actual new procedure on October 2nd to make sure that all of the communication, you know, happened on multiple levels and in multiple ways to all the households, as well as just personal contact and personal touch from the buildings to make sure all of the families were well-informed about the new procedure. And at the secondary level, with all the middle school and the high school students, we spoke with the students directly for an entire, the first month of school to make sure that they were aware and if they had any questions about where they stood and exactly what the alternate meal procedure would mean on October 2nd. We sent over three letters to all the households along with a copy of the procedure. And like I said, we started the school year at minus 25,047, and at the end, on September 29th, we were, we had made some progress. We were at minus 22,970, so like $2,500 worth of progress. And then we implemented the alternative meals on October 2nd, and on November 3rd, the balance was minus 11,911, which included minus $850 for the 334 alternate meals that were actually documented and rung up correctly out at all the schools. And we also have 12 households that are currently on payment plans with us. And, again, part of our outreach with all of the families who contact us at any level, either my office or out at the school level, you know, we basically ask, you know, what type of plan that they would like to set up, and then we just implement, you know, mark down their plan. If that's $5 a month, that's $5 a month. If every two weeks it's, you know, $20, then that's what it is. So...
Can I have a quick question, just about the timing?
Yep.
So did students start receiving alternate meals because of the carryover balance from last year in addition to any balance that was accrued this year? So we were sort of counting those dollars even though the policy was not in place at that point in time?
That's correct. Yes. And this is just a picture of a typical alternate meal. Again, we provide them with a cold sandwich option. In this case, it's turkey and cheese, and that lunch choice is available to all students if that's what we're serving on this day. And then they select whatever fresh fruits, vegetables, that they would like to go along with their meal, as well as their milk choice. So we just took a quick picture of what it would look like. As far as Craig was talking about, we've been doing a lot of brainstorming around just how do we get the word out to anybody either in the community or a business owner in the community, or any staff member, anybody who wants to make a donation to what used to be the Angel Account, which, you know, we changed the name to the Sunshine Account out of respect for just the diversity of our district. And it's a sunshine, always makes us all very happy, so Sunshine Account. But we took a look at a number of different ways in which we could, actually the easiest and most cost-effective ways that people could donate to our schools. And in so doing, looked at Minneapolis and St. Paul and what they're currently doing because last year at this time, there was a lot of news coverage about their schoolwide campaigns and what they were doing. So we took a look at their processes as well, and then came together as another cross-functional team and kind of basically made the decision to utilize our current fee-pay system here in Richfield to, it's very simple to create an account, for anybody to create an account. And when you log into the system, you can donate to the entire district to offset the negative lunch count balances, but you can also donate to a particular school of choice. So a lot of, any of the calls that we get primarily do revolve around wanting to give to a particular school where their children go, or, you know, some connection with the school itself. The middle school kind of jumped ahead of our plan with fee-pay. We had the account set up with fee-pay, but we didn't do a completely successful job of, like, getting it on the front page of the homepage and getting the word out and about. You kind of had to click and click to get to the link on fee-pay. The middle school who had two employees who work for Nutrition Services, unbeknownst to me, and I always say I'm the last to know everything, and this is another example, who jumped the gun and set up, one of whom does a lot of work in fundraising. That's her primary job, but she was employed at the middle school until a few weeks ago when she got too busy with her other job as a three-hour employee. And she went ahead and started GoFundMe for the middle school because she's very well-connected in the Richfield community. And in a short amount of time, you know, two weeks total, but certainly for the first two or three days, it was very successful. I mean, it raised like $1,414, and so, again, it was good in the sense that it accelerated my sense of urgency to try to figure out a solution that was easier to find and easier to do and the most cost-efficient way that anybody could go about donating funds to support this cause. So then, I talked about this a little bit, but a lot of the different, even the GoFundMe account has a lot of administrative fees associated with it. So, again, fee pays, the 3.99% fee is much less than the GoFundMe fees. So as a cross-functional team, when we started looking at all of the different options, you know, everybody was in agreement. And we did an example, we opened up an account, and we timed how long it took, and it didn't take very long. So our next steps really are going to be to try to, we have always had a Facebook page, but it's been kind of like well-hidden, like the link to fee-pay, but we're bringing that back to life and going to try to use that in a positive way as well to not only feature some of our special events that we do in all of the schools, but also to, you know, get the word out about if anybody has an interest and a desire to donate to this great cause to further help support students and families, then they'll quickly be able to access that information if they're following us on Facebook as well. And the next step, which is, you know, something that the team was in agreement about here when we were discussing it, is we really need a written procedure. And by the way, Minneapolis and St. Paul, neither one of them have that, so maybe we could be the first to create this wonderful procedure that is written on exactly what we're going to do with any donated funds. I mean, again, right up to this point, we have just honored the request of the, you know, it was, you know, real-time, honored the request of the person who has donated the funds. But all of our schools do not have the same, perhaps, future level of support that they may or may not get. And so Craig has been very good about pointing out not only our need for the written procedure, which we're all in agreement about, but also that, you know, the majority of the funds would be school-specific, and then maybe some other percentage of the funds, like 15% of the funds could go be spread throughout the other schools as well in the district. But that's not developed yet, that's just a hypothetical, right?
So obviously, the team is taking it very seriously because, you know, as you continue on to the next slide, you'll see there are some significant balances.
Yep. So this is the total debt, again, below the alternate meal thresholds, which are minus 15 at the secondary schools and minus 25 at the elementary schools. So on 1116, which seems like a long time ago, it was $9,921, and then the total student debt. So if you, excuse me, if you added up everybody who had minus $2 or anything like that, it winds up being minus 14,03060.
So I want to make sure I understand the difference. The 9,921 figure is just the debt for the students who are below the thresholds?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I had the same thing.
Thank you. And then this last slide is looking at all of the students that are in asterisks, so it's kind of small, but you have, you must have it on your laptops, but the number of students who currently now qualify for educational benefits but are over the threshold levels at each building. So, and then it gives you the breakdown based on their status, or if their household was denied in the amount, if they have no application at all. And then the final row is just the total debt by school.
So you can see Centennial has done amazing work in communication, in dialogue, and things like that. So just to highlight a couple of things previously that maybe weren't as clear, really, once an individual contacts the district and says, hey, I want to set up a payment schedule, or here's what I think I can afford, then they go off of the restriction of only being offered the alternative meal. So we don't hold off on that alternative meal until their debt is fully paid. All they need to do is contact the school and set up some sort of arrangement to have that moving forward. And you can see with that, just the debt alone has been more than cut in half as part of that process. Pam and her team have worked hard to provide a wide variety of meal options for our kids, and that's our goal, and that's where we're working diligently, and we really appreciate the work of the administration in the building and the outreach workers and the social workers engaging in those conversations and communications. And you can see, we still have a number of individuals that haven't made that contact, especially in that group that's in the free and reduced, but there's been multiple efforts, as you saw, to kind of do that outreach and communicate with them. One of the things that we found in looking for the fundraising and different options was the power of social media, and how just getting that word out about the need and things like that can generate revenue. And so that's where we're turning some of our energies at this point. And then, as Pam said, we want to make sure that moving forward, once we get this group cleared off that are now qualifying for free and reduced, and get that communication moving forward, that we have ways to help other students who are on that brink. So right now, most of the donations have really been directed to those students who are now on free and reduced because those are the ones that have the greatest demonstrated risk. But we know that there are individuals who are on that cusp where they may not have qualified for free and reduced but have situations that pop up that just can limit those opportunities. And that's where we're looking at getting those written procedures in place or guidelines that says, if you're within this range of, you know, one child or two child additionally in your household, and then you would be qualifying, maybe have some opportunities where there's a partial payment or some sort of a payment plan where they're credited in those ways, or given some of those grant funds that are donated. So working on that process moving forward and making sure that we have something that's system-wide is able to be applied no matter what school you're at or what program you're at, you have some continuity of expectations that way. So you can see a lot of work's taking place, and, you know, we're available for any questions or recommendations as far as how we do that moving forward.
I have a few questions, if that's okay. This slide, actually, I'll work backwards from this slide. This slide represents the breakdown tying into the prior slide of those who are below those thresholds, right? That's why the totals. Am I reading it correctly that the, so I think it's 31 students, or 17, six, two, five, and one, from students within that breakdown, there's 31 who then applied for and qualified for free and reduced lunch?
Correct.
Okay.
Then additional detail, have not been responsive to any phone call, responded in any way. I believe there are other students who have then either set up a payment plan or at least began a conversation who then might not be on that list. Is that correct?
Right. That's correct.
Oh, this is strictly the subset of those who've been responsive?
This is...
Not.
Non-responsive.
Those who have not responded to any of the communications.
Okay. But 31 of them have applied for and qualified for free and reduced lunch, an additional 10, 14 were applied and were denied, and then the rest that we've not heard from. Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, working backwards. Oh, I guess one of the things that I had questions about when I first requested this, at the start of the year, we had a lot of startup costs for this, or startup work for this program, for your team. And so Pam, you had mentioned the support of the social workers and the outreach workers. And so are the thresholds set at a level that creates too much work? Or are they, you know what I mean? Like, so there might be students who have, who a parent might put $5 in and knows that their student's never going to really buy, but if our threshold was we're going to notify people when they're below 10, does that family get a phone call each time or no?
Well, you know, I think it's so new that I don't know if I formulated an exact opinion, but I certainly understand the intention of the board revising the two different thresholds. You know, in my world, obviously, it'd be a lot easier if they had the same. And if they were, you know, for automated calls and for all of our template letters and everything, and for the family, it's much easier to possibly pay $15 than $26. But I don't think, I think it's probably too soon.
I think your question is the amount of work that it takes into contacting those families.
Correct. And is it too much at the start of the year, you know, were the staff...
So most of those tiers are automated contacts.
Okay.
So most of those until they hit the alternative meals, and I think it's until they hit $50.
Yeah.
When they hit $50 is when it becomes a personal contact from the school. There was a lot of work that took place at the beginning of this year because of that debt that had carried forward.
Okay.
And so that's where a lot of the work took place this year, and we're hoping now that we have this plan in place, that it will basically be self-sustaining and monitoring that way, and we won't end up in a similar situation.
I guess my other, you got to where my other question was. I know it's, we started with a few years ago, we reset all the balances to zero. So we started this year with families who carried over. If they had a negative $20 balance, that student started day one with negative 20 reflected in their account. Okay.
And that's been the standard procedure until we ended up with that $30,000, and at that point needed to feel like we started fresh, and we thought it would be better. What we found is it didn't get better.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. One is about this first row actually here, so the students and families who do now qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch. Are those students still getting an alternate meal because of the debt that they still owe, even though we know that they now qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch?
They're continuing to get an alternative meal because they've made no contact, and the policies had indicated that there was an effort to contact to make arrangements and set up that communication. So they still get, it's a fully reimbursable meal, it qualifies for free and reduced, it's just a limited selection from the standpoint of just working to make sure that people are contacting the school. As Pam indicated, you know, a contact of, you know, I can afford $5 a week.
Yeah.
You know, anything, any contact is what triggers them off of that alternative meal rotation.
But wouldn't applying, couldn't applying and actually getting approved be considered a pretty significant step?
But did they not apply till after this, or were they already on free and reduced, right?
And this is where it gets really complicated because everybody's story is specific to their particular family, on whether there's been a long lapse when they haven't applied for benefits and all of a sudden do apply for benefits now that the new alternative meal procedure, you know, or whether or not, you know, who knows? You know, everybody has their own specific story, so it's not just one thing.
The debt was accrued when they were not on qualifying for free and reduced.
Correct.
Otherwise, they would not have that debt.
Yeah. I guess I personally, I'm struggling with the fact that a student now qualifies, and we are still holding them sort of accountable for things that happened previously. And I understand that there could be all sorts of reasons why that happened, but it feels uncomfortable to me that they might not have the full range of meal choices that they would get as a free and reduced-priced lunch student because of things that have happened in the past when they now qualify. So I guess for me, the question is, have there been conversations about forgiving that 27, 10, 50 number because we know they now qualify?
So, yes, there were conversations.
Okay.
And we looked at the matter of, there are a lot of different situations where people either did not apply, and so we wanted to start with a standard of, you know, we're requesting that everybody pay, or at least contact the district to make some arrangements. So we've set the bar fairly low at what it takes, and in many cases, have individuals who have applied, who have gotten donations, and said, you know what, I can't afford to pay, and we've used some of those donations to help accrue that. We're looking just for, is there some level of accountability to just contact the school and say, hey, here's what I need and here's why I need it? And if they say, here's what I need and here's why I need it, we go through every effort to make that contact possible. We have social workers, counselors that are in the buildings that are making that contact and things like that. It's a matter of when there are times that people have accrued significant debt in the past, and either for not applying, or, you know, they weren't qualifying at that time or weren't qualifying at that time but weren't paying it, trying to have a standard communication. But our focus was to treat every situation individually and take those into account with ultimate sensitivity for the fact that we have families and parents that are at need. And if they contact us and say, here's what I need, you know, we work to address that as much as possible. If they've contacted, many have contacted us, and some have contacted us and paid the check right up front for what they owed, and to write off all of those because somebody now qualifies just is, you know, a challenge too. So it's been trying to be sensitive to every one of those situations, and I think Pam and her team and the buildings teams have been, done a great job of advocating for different situations and addressing those things. And so there was conversation, it was intentional that we worked towards that.
Yeah.
Right or wrong, but it was trying to create some consistency, knowing that every situation was a little bit different, and trying to address it as best possible.
Well, the other thing is, we really want to know where the gap in communication is coming from, you know, because like I said, we have, you know, documented letters that go out to the households, you know, 28, 30 communications, like last school year when they were occurring the debt. So I think it is important... So I think it is important to have a touch point, and to try to figure out how to avoid the situation with another family in the future.
I'll just say one more thing about this, and I'll move on to my other comment, which is, I completely understand for the folks who are in the denied or no application category. I specifically am struggling with people who have gone through the step of applying for free or reduced price lunch, have been approved, which demonstrates there is real financial need, and that we are sort of, you know, staying firm that while they still have to talk to us about it. I think that's the part that feels uncomfortable to me, is like, we're requiring them to talk to us when an impartial entity has said there is demonstrated financial need here. To me, that is where I feel like we should just move on and carry forward.
Is that allowed? Is that allowed within the USDA lunch program, to have folks on free and reduced lunch have a limited menu?
Well, they have to be provided a reimbursable meal.
Yeah.
Choice.
Yeah. So the other thing that I wanted to share was just that I had the chance to go to the middle school last week, and actually watch lunch in action, which I wanted to do before we had this conversation. So I'm really grateful to Principal Zambrino and the nutrition team for welcoming me. And it was great and really helpful to be there. I was standing sort of just off to the side of the lunch line, and to see the really good system that they have in place. I think I was especially impressed by how, you know, how the keypad system works, and just how well the team member that was standing there was able to really discreetly, you know, let a student know if they were at a certain level. And I think because of the real efforts that the middle school has done, they have very few, if any, students who qualify for an alternate meal at this point in time. So I actually didn't even see an alternate meal be given, which meant, if it happened, it was very, very discreet, or there wasn't anybody in that particular lunch period. So it was helpful to talk to the team there, to hear about all of the work that they have been doing, as you said, with social workers, with outreach workers. And I'm just really grateful to all of you for what you have done to try to make this, you know, just as seamless as possible, knowing that it's a difficult topic. It's, you know, family finances, and, you know, children's meals. It's something that's uncomfortable for all of us, to figure out how to make these things work in the best possible way. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Continuing, or that's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update. We will move on to the TIES fee request.
All right. So as we began a conversation at our last meeting, and you'll see later on in the agenda for action, is a letter to consider withdrawal from TIES. One of the things that has been a challenge with TIES, and TIES, this is a reminder, is a technology service consortium. I believe there are 48 districts as part of the consortium. Richfield has been in this consortium, and is one of the founding members for over 30 years, I believe. They're currently fiscally struggling quite significantly. And one of their rights as part of the joint powers agreement is if the board of directors votes on increases in fees, and fees that would be assigned to districts, that is part of that joint powers agreement. And so, as we talked about at our last meeting, the executive board had decided, because of their fiscal situation, and their possible inability to fully meet their payroll requirements for the remainder of the school year, that a special fee was needed at $7 per student to the districts participating in TIES, as part of being one of the membership groups of TIES. Board of directors met in between the two meetings. We actually had a team there. Board Member Brackey and myself were there. We actually voted no, as part of our input as to the fees. However, overwhelmingly, the fee passed the board of directors. And so as part of that joint powers agreement, we actually are required to pay the fee of $7 per student. And so I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that as we look at our partnership with TIES, and we look at the work that we are doing, and the strong consortium that it has been over the years, it's currently something that we definitely need to deeply evaluate long-term to determine, and obviously, as you see that letter coming forward later on in the agenda, whether or not TIES dissolves, and whether or not we remain a member, something we really just need to continue to look at with a fine-tooth comb.
I would just add, I think it's, as we discussed at the last meeting, there's real reason why we should contribute that $7 per pupil, to make sure that we continue to have the technology solutions that we need for the time being. And if that means helping TIES remain financially solvent, that is probably a commitment that we should make, I think. You know, as we were at the meeting, and just speaking for myself, when I cast a no vote, it was more about the way in which it happened, and sort of, I think, the lack of communication and transparency about what led to that point that was concerning to me. So just wanted to share that context.
Questions, feedback?
No, just, I appreciate Crystal's perspective on that. There is, as she mentioned last meeting, if you Google it, there's no shortage of information about prior mismanagement within TIES, and so, but that, you know, we can't wish that away as much as we'd like, so there is an aspect to, we would still like the services that we enjoy right now to continue to exist for us to enjoy.
Right. And we've done a significant number of things proactively to make sure that we are able to operate separately from TIES as we move towards the future. We actually use nine products currently that are in partnership with TIES, in addition to our student management system, our staff management system, our finance system. So many of those are connected to TIES. Many of them, we are able to actually use whether or not we were in the TIES consortium long-term. There are four products that we are currently using that are within TIES. And so over the next 18 months or so, we will be looking at ways to either find alternate products, or make sure that those products would be supported, whether or not we are in TIES, and whether or not TIES continues as a consortium. And so we're doing our part as Richfield Public Schools to make sure that we're able to stand, from a technology perspective, outside of that consortium, regardless of what the future may hold for us.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Policy, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So we move on to old business and board policy review.
All right. So you were seeing 216.1 and 216.2, public comments, guidelines, and form, having taken feedback from board members. And so you'll note that in 216, obviously, we had used the board secretary's identification there, which will be used on the actual form, but not be used in the policy. We changed the time for signup at ending one minute before the meeting begins, so that we are accommodated at least some time prior to the meeting, but if the meeting time changes, that allows for that also. And so board's feedback was taken in there. And then there were also some changes put in, I believe, to the form, based on a couple of feedback from board members also. And so it has been a long time coming. I believe we had this in terms of 216 passed previously. We are now looking at guidelines in the form that would be used for public comment within Richfield Public Schools.
And do we need to re-pass 216, the policy, because of those small changes?
We do not. We did that at our previous meeting, and so...
Oh, we did?
Correct. Just taking the feedback and changes in regard to...
I don't think the one minute before the meeting line was in there last time.
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry, on the guidelines. Correct. Correct. You would need to move forward with the guidelines.
Yeah, 216.1.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. So 216 is the policy, 216.1 and 2 are the guidelines.
I was confused. My bad.
Well, having reviewed the revised form, I am willing to move the guidelines in their revised form. That would be 216.1. And then we would move 216.2 along with that, which is the supporting public documentation.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and 216.1 and 2 guidelines in form are passed.
All right. So similarly, we come back with guidelines for board policy 926. Now, just as a reminder, I believe we did pass board policy 926. So we are looking at guideline 926.1. So the guy, the policy was left in there for us to review, just as a reminder, but a first draft of administrative guidelines, a first edited draft was put into the board agenda. Talking about proactively reaching out, talking about presenting a summary of advising committees, and making sure that that is published and distributed by our district, and then adding the new technology components in regard to social media, and then also making sure that our strategies directly align with our overall district communications. So feedback on 926.1?
I have a few comments. In section 1B1, it says, "The board will hold public hearings before making a decision on issues of special concern." All of our meetings are public.
Yes.
All of our agendas are made, you know, so does this create, in some, will this create the impression that if something's important of special concern, that we will hold off on a decision or delay it?
Or that we will follow some other procedure.
Or that we'll follow some other procedure, rather than publishing the agenda on Friday and voting on it probably on Monday.
Because hearing conveys a very different meaning, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
So we will check MSBA guidelines in regard to that.
Okay.
So 1B1.
1B1.
Okay.
And then the curiously numbered 1, 3, this is like a, out of a comedy movie, A, B, 3.
Just, yes.
What does it mean for us to actively reach out?
Yes.
Right? And is that the board? For example, am I supposed to be soliciting community members, parents, students? Or is that the district administration?
Or both.
Or both.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But I just don't know, and what level of activity would satisfy the requirement? I mean, if this is our policy, then we are all bound to actively reach out. And so what does that mean, and when are we told to do it, and in what manner?
So B3 needs further definition and clarity.
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
And then, ah, yes, the last thing I have was somewhere down on communications, where we would, oh, yes, so it's section 3C, every contact between a school district employee and a citizen is a public relations interchange. So in the eyes of the public, the employee represents the school district, therefore information and in-service will be provided. This is something that, you know, if we hear any concerns from parents or folks in the district, it relates to a communication gone poorly, or a communication that was not as clear, you know, as we would want on a, you know, at least on a first pass, right? There's, I mean, there are millions of communications seemingly in the course of a year. A teacher talks to a parent, a principal talks to a parent, district administration talks to a parent or a student. And something goes wrong with it, and then we hear about it, and everyone's tensions are running high. And so, you know, I think it's really, really important within this. It seems like it's buried within here, but the notion of information and in-service training for all staff on communications is very, very important. And I think it's, it might even be the most important paragraph within this whole thing to me, because I've said a number of times, nearly all the complaints we get are born somewhere out of a communications breakdown.
So clearly, we need further definition of C, we need to further accentuate it, and we need to find a way to make that either a separate policy or something within the guidelines here.
Not necessarily. I'm not saying we have to necessarily expand on it within the guideline or the policy. I'm just extremely curious to hear how we are going to follow through on the information and in-service provided to enhance employees' public relation skills.
Yeah.
Because that's the real action in there, where if this is our policy, that's the part we have to really follow through on. And what people do with that, if they improve or get better, we hopefully will notice. But we have to make sure that that is, you know, collectively, and I mean, I've said this before, the board shares this problem too, in that we aren't as clear in communicating, and we hear about it from the public. And so, you know, we could use it as well. And so it's not just the staff, it's the board and the administration, and it trickles on down to pretty much all people. And we're certainly not going to train the parents, but we can only control how our message sounds, and that it is delivered well, and delivered appropriately from the appropriate person, things like that.
We will look into that.
All right. Thanks.
So seconding that point that Tim just made, I did have one really specific question. This is under, again, under the first section 3, and then it's the subheading 5. I think the numbering is maybe off, but it basically says, "A summary of advisory committees will be maintained, published, and distributed by the district." Just one in clarity on that. Are we, with the, when we say a summary of advisory committees, are we talking about minutes of those committees? Or are we just talking about the schedule of the committee meetings?
Members.
What sort of level of detail are we talking about there?
So currently, we have them published on the website with minutes, members, and things of that nature, but I think, I think the intention and what, when we looked at the MSBA policies that have this, I think the intention is to have an aligned set of practices that are occurring communication-wise across all committees and advisories, and then have that shared out, and I would say, if I was to analyze our performance, shared out in a more effective way than how we do within our website. And so we probably need to put some additional detail into 1B5, the summary of advisory committees.
I have a question about 1B2. So this would represent a new practice for us as a board, because as I read this, it says that we will appoint advisory committees. And at least in my two years so far, I don't feel like I've been a part of appointing advisory committees. So it might be a clarifying question of what that actually means, but this, to me, feels like an important new practice, to make sure that we're all clear on what it is that we're saying.
So I believe the practice has been to set up and have advisory committees. So like, an FPAC is a board-appointed committee, but I think that clearly takes additional definition. As I think about talking about what we'll be launching in January, is it additional superintendent teacher advisory, student advisory, or staff advisory, student advisory, and community advisory? Those would be, well, while you were not in the day-to-day of that, setting up and expecting those committees are that role of the board. And so it looks like we should also be reviewing, as a board, what those advisories are, and making sure we're all on the same page of what those are, and making sure we have all the advisories that the board would want us to have.
Okay. Because the language here makes me feel like we would be appointing members to the committees.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. I think, at least what our past practice has been, would be more aptly described by that the board is chartering or authorizing ad hoc advisory committees, or advisory committees, not necessarily ad hoc. Having said that, I think we would benefit based upon other elements of the guidelines. I think frankly, we would benefit from having a little bit more granular oversight, especially as we're putting forward the goal of having, of being more purposeful about the committee makeup, and having committees that are representative of our constituency and all that kind of stuff. So I guess while I don't know that we have to be appointing each individual member, I would be supportive of more oversight.
Okay. We will work through guidelines to put that into place before coming back to the next meeting.
Okay. So lots of feedback on policy 926. So we'll move on to policy 953, visitors to school district buildings and sites.
And similarly, we are looking at 953.1 guidelines in relation to that. And you will just notice in addition, in terms that all visitors are expected to sign in using each building's defined entry process, including obtaining a visitor pass, and just sort of laying out some of the guidelines that would be in play for those expectations.
I just, I forget, did we clarify who constitutes a visitor? What constitutes being a visitor?
I believe that is within the policy itself.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I just want, I mean...
And I'm looking to see if there's a specific definition, but we can absolutely double-check and make sure that there is a specific definition of visitor in there, too.
Okay.
My only reaction to this is that, as I was sort of thinking...
and make sure that there is a specific definition of visitor in there, too.
Okay.
My only reaction to this is that, as I was sort of thinking about the exceptions to who passes are required of, I was surprised by number one, which is members attending a meeting of an organization that has been authorized by administration, and slightly surprised by number two, which is, you know, related to voting. I understood then why that probably did have an exemption, but I, as I thought about it, I guess I was still kind of surprised that we would not require passes of people who would be meeting in the school during the school day.
Okay, so we will check into policy reasons behind guideline 1B1.
Great.
Any additional questions or feedback on this guideline? Okay, so if there are other things, you can certainly get those before the next meeting, because we'll come through the next provision on those guidelines.
Okay, so we'll share any further feedback in the next couple of weeks, and we will move on to the guidelines for Policy 953, field trips, field trips and administrative things.
Right, and I think in this one, we actually have not passed this particular policy. We had passed the previous policies, this one then was the next rollout, and we slowed our rollout of policies down because of the level of guidelines that were available in each of those pieces. And there were some questions about field trips, a request for us to check some of the surrounding district area policies, to see what they had in place. Found that people's, there are widely varying practices, from Edina, which has somewhere in the range of 32 pages of field trip policy and guidelines, to some of the other surrounding districts that are significantly shorter than that. We did find that we cover the main pieces, trying to separate those into instructional trips, supplementary trips, and extended trips. Different districts have different categorization of field trips, and different methodologies for categorizing them. And then, what we found as the significant add within Regulations Number 3, which leads to our guidelines, is the C that was added, is procedures shall include administrative approval for all field trips, and then on the feedback of board members previously, instructional and supplementary field trips are receiving approval from the building or program leader. Extended field trips must additionally receive approval from the superintendent or superintendent's designate, and each approval shall last for the duration of up to one school year, with new approval required for each year. And that had answered a specific board member's question also, which is, do you get in perpetuity approval for field trips? And so, while it may be a slight additional administrative responsibility, these are things that need to be checked on a yearly basis, because as things, even with things like wonderful field trips to Wood Lake, as science standards change, we want to make sure those trips remain appropriate, and so we always want to have those extra sets of eyes on those pieces.
Makes sense.
So, you will see feedback from board members changes within Policy 653. However, the guideline, when we get to it, will be a first look at the guideline. Feedback on, or a motion for field trips, 653.
I have no feedback. I'll move that we accept Policy 653 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Polis, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the field trip policy has passed. And we will move on to guidelines.
All right, so as we look at the guidelines, a couple of pieces were placed in already to make changes, to make them more appropriate. Collection of fees, it used to say a fee of $2.50 shall be charged, that would require that fee to be charged of every supplemental field trip. The language has already been changed to not to exceed the total cost of transportation and may be charged. There are trips that may cost under $2.50 a student, there are trips that may cost more, and there are also reasons why we may not end up charging for transportation. And so, that is, that is the reason for that language change. Also, you see local field trips of eight miles or less shall be exempt from a bus fee, that there are times where that's not necessarily appropriate, because obviously, as we pay for transportation, there is a driver and a bus fee in for each of these And then, those were the main changes. Feedback or input on the guidelines?
Not for me.
I have no comments.
I will move the guidelines as presented.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and field trip guidelines are passed. So, we will move on to new business and the draft withdrawal from TIES.
So, I have gotten a crash course in consortiums and partnerships and collaboratives since I've become the superintendent of Richfield Public Schools. One of the things that I have learned is that withdrawal letters are a very interesting part of the relationship. What withdrawal letters do is allow you to have the ability to choose whether you are remaining in the collaborative or not. They're dangerous, because it reduces the stability of the collaborative. As we discussed in our conversation with TIES, TIES is currently struggling from a financial perspective. For those districts, and there are 12 districts currently who have put in letters of withdrawal to TIES, there are actually some pretty significant fees that would be associated with them leaving, and so they have a very difficult decision to make, whether or not they want to follow through on June 30th with withdrawal, or whether or not they want to retract the withdrawal letter. As I'm sitting and looking out for Richfield Public Schools and our role within TIES and our future as an organization, deep reflection, it seems pretty logical, from my perspective, for us to put in a letter of withdrawal, which would allow us on June 30th of 2019 to make that similar decision. We may remain in the collaborative, we may decide to pull out of the collaborative. We don't know what fees could possibly be associated with that at the time, and it would be applied or calculated based on the financial state of the collaborative at that time. And then, similarly, in January of this coming year, there will be a conversation and a probable vote about the possible dissolution of the collaborative, which then may or may not impact whether or not we would pull out or go along with the dissolution at that time. Reason for putting in the letter at this time is that it would then put us in a position to really have all options available to Richfield Public Schools. It allows us to move forward, it allows us to be part of the dissolution, it allows us to retract and continue on. And so, it basically just makes all options available come 2019. So, I have that in front of you today. Questions?
So, right, and obviously, this is just simply reiterating a point that you've already made, but our intention, whether we file this letter or not, but certainly our intention, if we do file a letter, is to study in detail our relationship with TIES, have a very careful appraisal of the pros and cons. Yeah, so you, I mean, you've already touched on that, but I'm just sort of...
Right, and we have done that at present. So, we had this conversation about a year ago, decided not to put in a withdrawal letter at that time, and at present, the fees of TIES, it is more beneficial still for us to be within the partnership, even with the additional $7 per student at this time. Not knowing where things will go with Ties in the future, this would just be that safeguard. Similarly, as I talked about before, we currently use nine products that are supported by Ties. Four of them are solely Ties products at this time. We'll be looking at how we would support those four particular products, if Ties were dissolved, or if we were to move off of Ties. And over that next year and a half, whether we move forward with this or not, we'll be planning for the possible dissolution of Ties, and so those additional five products that are things like Synergy that is supported outside of Ties, we'll explore that relationship to continue on with supportive Synergy and continue moving forward with that product, whether Ties is part of that conversation or not.
I think what makes it challenging is there's a couple different paths that we are walking down simultaneously. One is the path of just this withdrawal, which is just our district's sort of, you know, signal to Ties that we may choose to withdraw come June 2019. But the other, actually, much more immediate path in terms of Ties, is this January special board meeting that Steve mentioned, where all of the member districts will be coming together to take a vote, should Ties dissolve, or should Ties remain? And so, the Ties group is getting a bunch of financials together for member districts. I know Steve has a vote and I have a vote at that meeting, if past practice remains consistent, which I would assume it would. So, I will be interested to hear, you know, more questions and thoughts from people about that particular decision that is also coming, not, not separate, or not the same as this one about our withdrawal, but it's complicated, because they're somewhat interconnected.
And in January, we'll be having that conversation. So, that conversation, so the financial package will be presented at Ties on December 20th, I believe, or December 18th. In mid-January, that conversation, or that vote will happen for Board Member Brackey and myself, and so this board will see that information in our first meeting in January. It'll be part of the superintendent's update, because we won't act as a board on that. However, you will provide advice to Crystal and I about how we should respond to the possible dissolution vote that'll be coming in January. At the same time, we're also, Ties has asked every district to do that sort of extrication plan, to look at what it would look like to disentangle ourselves from the Ties-based products, or the Ties support that goes along with the products that we use. And so, we're also conducting at the same time an analysis of our technology programming, and making sure that we have all the things in place to be highly successful now and into the future.
How many, how many districts are members of Ties?
I believe 48.
Do we know how many have...
12 put in this action.
Have taken this action? How many have previously, like, so did any put a letter in last year and are already possibly leaving in June?
12 people are currently in that spot.
And then, it's unclear how many will join us.
So, 12 have the option to leave at this next June 30th?
Correct.
Or before, okay. And then, additional of the 48 are considering an action like ours?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't know what they might do.
And just, we have nine products, four of which are standalone ties. Do we pay for those on a per-student basis, or are those, are those on a...
There's a wide range. For the most part, they're a per-student basis, but then there's also, there's some that are an overall license basis for a district, but then also for the supports that you use. And so, if you need some additional support with the implementation, you may or may not be charged. So, we were one of the pilot districts for Synergy, and we were one of the first to launch, and then also for our finance system, we were one of the first launchers of that, because we wanted to move, we wanted to be the ones who were moving off of the Ties products that we were using, and the ones that could be supported outside of that. They also supported us for little to no fee in that situation, but additional services and support often cost additional funds.
Just for context, the $7 that they're assessing us right now, what is, I mean, is the current assessment $7? Is the current, for all of our services, is it $7? Is it $700 per student? I mean, what is this, in terms of what we spend with Ties, what is the additional assessment as a...
I hesitate to make an exact guess at this time.
Inexact is fine for me.
Without Mr. Patterness here, I'm slightly challenged. I think it's more than that, but I can, how about if I have that for you at our December meeting, and I'll be more exact, because it is per-product, per-student, for the most part?
Some of the products are bundled, and so, because we do a couple of them, they get a discount percentage.
Sure. Okay.
The fact that Anthony's leaving, is that, and what I'm trying to say, is that going to affect this decision at all?
No, no, that won't impact that at all. We have taken the steps, knowing that Anthony received a cabinet-level promotion to Oseo, and we are congratulatory to Mr. Patterness as he moves forward. We have all the steps in place for a smooth transition. Similarly, Mr. Patterness, we've agreed with Oseo that he'll be coming back for a couple days to help a transition and train in our new director of technology when that person's hired, but we have all the systems of support to continue on in that way. And he's done a very good job, and we've seen the technology vision, we've seen the technology strategic plan, which aligns to our overall plan, so the roadmap is there for us to continue on while we make that HR transition.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just verify my understanding with the products that we're referencing. My understanding of Ties is that it is both a sort of a data management organization, in other words, they have the physical servers and that sort of thing, that is essentially the physical location for data storage, and that they also are a software, sort of a software developer, with at least some of these products, in the terms of that the software that is, that we're running is actually developed and maintained by Ties, as opposed to just simply a purchasing collaborative. Do I have all of that straight?
Those are both correct, and they provide physical technology-based support to districts in the implementation. So, an example would be, Synergy would be a product that is purchased externally, that is a collaborative, we get a lower price for purchasing externally. And then, they also provide additional support and training on school sites for Synergy, which is our student management system. They also have FeePay, for example, which is a Ties-developed product, and their software developers developed that product, and they provide support onsite for the implementation of it.
Right, got it. And, okay. Well, that helps me, as far as just thinking it through, in terms of, one could ask the question from a business model standpoint, whether, for Ties to do in-house development, whether that is the most effective way to sort of manage that. I mean, and it sounds like that's a big piece of what we've done recently, is to move towards products that are external, that are developed, maintained by an external vendor, and Ties may be helping us with the implementation, but we're not fully dependent upon Ties to maintain the software, maintain the database.
Correct. To extricate ourselves from Ties requires that, and so the direction, partially to answer Mr. Ashmead, the direction I've given Anthony, as we've looked to each of these products, and Dr. Roby and I have worked very collaboratively together, and Mr. Holgy and I have worked collaboratively together, is each of these products we bring in that is new, has to be allowed to stand alone from Ties, because whether or not we thought dissolution was coming, we wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain our products regardless of what was happening in the larger picture. As Mr. Polis pointed out, there are things you can find out about, they're just learning about the cost, the expenditure and revenue from each of their products, and they haven't necessarily done the level of analysis that this board might expect, or that you all hold me accountable towards, and so they are just learning which products are sort of running any profit for Ties, and which ones are running at a deficit to Ties. And so, we really want to make sure that we're clear in our team what those are for us.
Well, I would, if you prepare for a motion, Madam Chair, I would personally be in favor of moving the letter in order for us to have all of our options available as we move forward then, through the coming six to 12 months, to study more carefully what our further choices might be.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. We will move on to draft of the Richfield Legislative Platform.
All right, so as we have looked at the AMSD draft platform, we have looked at our strategic plan, and we've looked at the things that are top priority for ourselves. We came back and had a conversation in our previous meeting. We had fully agreed to three of our draft platforms, and we were having a conversation about the fourth. Just as a reminder, point number one, increase special education funding to reduce the special education cross-subsidy. And just as a reminder, cross-subsidy is special ed services that are not fully paid for by the state or the federal government. It constitutes nearly half of all of our special education funding, and it is a significant part of the funding gap within not just Richfield Public Schools, but the entire state of Minnesota. Two, expand programs and incentives to attract, develop, and retain teachers, particularly teachers of color. As we talk about within our strategic plan and things we talk about at the board level, we are working to actively recruit and retain a high-quality, diverse workforce. Number three, reduce standardized tests to allow high schools to replace the MCA with a nationally-recognized college entrance exam, because across the state, there are challenges sometimes with the high school and students taking the MCA, and yet, having everyone take a comprehensive college-based entrance exam like the ACT or the SAT makes a lot of sense to a great deal of people. And finally, that last piece, because it is a policy-based meeting, and there isn't a biennial budget, but this has been a significant conversation, and is likely to be a conversation, which would be reform and stabilize the teacher retirement fund, through funding that avoids cuts to programs for students. And so, we're not asking for specific money, but we're asking if there is action taken at the state level to reduce the gap in funding and expectations for the teacher retirement account, which, of which, there is somewhere in the 30% range, I think it's 70-some percent funded. We want to make sure that that actually does not impact funding directly supported to students. does not impact funding directly supported to students, so that if there are changes made, it's actually funded at that state level. Thoughts, input on that?
Good to me.
Yeah, I think TRA is an important thing for us to bring forward and raise profile on it.
Right. And a few years ago, there was the change in the accounting standards, where, you know, you noticed in our budget, all of a sudden, we had this massive on-paper deficit. And that's part of the disclosure of public pension plans, that the entities that own them have to now state publicly, have to state the relative level of funding. And so ours is in a, you know, has a deficit, it's not 100% funded, and so it gets assigned out to all the districts. So suddenly, we have on paper, I forget if it was 25 or 36 million, but it was on order in that range. It is extremely sensitive to some assumptions, like, in particular, the investment rate of return. And some might argue that those assumptions are rosy. And so if the investment return isn't as high as they state, our actual share of the deficit is much, much larger than 25 to 30 million, so. I mean, it's not coming due tomorrow, but it's the sort of thing.
And Tim, as an actuary, is this the sort of thing where it would, you would expect that this would, let's say we don't fix it, you would expect that this would hit in pieces rather than in the entire bit, the entire 25 million?
Well, just to point, you asked me as an actuary, I'm not a pension actuary, so I'm not technically qualified to opine on that professionally. But it would come in waves, you would see it coming. It would not crash all at once.
Yeah, it's not like a cliff, I guess.
It's not a cliff, but it's the sort of thing that we would get a lot of notice on. If you read the right news articles, or the right news feeds, you do see a lot of discussion of public pension funding from across the country, whether it's at the municipal or school district level, or at the state level, right? You look at things like Chicago and Illinois, there are some states that are teetering. You know, Detroit had a massive underfunded pension system, and they, you know, part of their bankruptcy involved a negotiation with the unions that were the beneficiaries. And it, you know, not a great outcome for those who were counting on it. So, you know, it's one of the things, it's one thing to promise a benefit, it's another to properly fund for it. And private entities that have pensions, like, you know, a private entity company, they have requirements to fund at a certain level and have their reports. And then there's also a sort of a fund behind it, which, a guarantee fund, which provides a minimum benefit in the event of insolvency of it. Public entities do not have such a safety net. And so if they run out of money or whatever, they're just kind of gone. And so it's the sort of thing that eventually, you know, the benefits that were promised do have to be paid for.
Well, and it's also important to note that we are not the only ones in this situation.
Oh, certainly not, yes.
This is, yeah, this is national, I mean. Yeah. Not that that makes it any less important, it's...
We're all on the same lousy boat. Well, not all of us. There are places where funding levels are darn near 100%. And so...
Why do we approve the legislative platform?
I'll second.
Give it to Tim.
We have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the Richfield Legislative Platform passes. And we will move on to miscellaneous pay rates.
Mr. Milt here.
Great, thank you. I'm presenting tonight the miscellaneous pay rates for the 2017-2018 school year. These rates cover a variety of positions in the school district, primarily casual positions and those that are not represented by a collective bargaining agreement. Each year, we usually bring these rates forward to the board, as with some potential recommended changes to these rates. And so this year, you have in your board packet the recommended changes for 2017-18. I'd like to just highlight a couple of things. First and foremost, we did change the formatting to this document, so that it'd be easier for both our public and our employees that are working from this document to read. We kind of grouped things into three sections. The first is the miscellaneous positions. In this section, you'll notice increases for the school RN position by 2%. Increases for the rate of homebound teachers, which is consistent with the teacher contract, again, 2% to the hourly rate there. And that rate then changes in effective date of 1-1 of 2018. We did look at removing the outreach worker positions from this. This is a very important group in our school district, and we've seen some increases in the number of outreach workers over the past couple of years, based on needs in the district and the different programs that we have. So we felt that we should really separate this group out and work with them on an individual basis each year to look at their working agreements, terms and conditions, and work with them individually. So we are in the process of doing that now, and we hope to be bringing that to the board here in one of the next few meetings here, either in December or early January, with some recommendations there. Also, we looked at removing the security officer position from miscellaneous rates here in the high school. We replaced that position with another para-security position or a para-position. So we do have same number of positions, just a different title in the building, as well as we have our police liaison that works with us here in the high school as well. And then, we did add the health resource coordinator and health educator positions. These are typically grant-funded positions, so every year, we're working on increasing our grants to make sure that we have the funds to pay for these positions. Coordinator is a position that we've had in the past. We did hire a new person into that position this year. And then the health educator position is typically a position that was housed in an outside resource, but this year, that resource went away, so we had to hire internally for that position to continue that education for our students. And then we move on to the next group of community education. We did see some increases in the range for hourly rates for the community ed instructors, really to encompass that computer position that was separate before. We do have a higher rate for the person that comes in from the Minneapolis School District to teach in our community ed program there, so we wanted to make sure that we incorporated that rate into the higher range. Removes the wiggles and giggles positions for miscellaneous pay, because we have our own internal preschool program now, so we didn't need that program anymore. Decreases the range for the aquatic coordinator, and you'll see several other increases there for different lifeguard positions, water safety positions. These are all within, when we look at Bloomington, Eden Prairie, some of our surrounding school districts, these are all within the competitive range for our external competition. And then we added a community ed supervisor position. This is the person that will help make sure that community ed instructors and the people participating in those classes are coming into the buildings, finding where they need to go. Equipment is there. It also takes away from having to call upon our custodians or our building cleaners at night to be able to do these duties for the community ed classes, so it frees them up to do the job in the building that they need to be doing in the evenings. And then with athletics and activities, this is where we tried to do a lot of work here in combining these positions. As you may recall from previous years, we had this separated out by activity or athletic event. And so we tried to combine all of the common titles into similar titles this year, as well as we took a really hard look at the hours that were being put in in each of these positions, and tried to balance things over the course of that. So overall, looking at decrease rate of $5 per event for the ticket taker, increases of $10 per event for clock announcer and scorer one position. The biggest increase that you see on here is that $100 increase to the clock operator and timing systems positions. This rate of $250 is actually half of what most districts pay, and it's because we have our own equipment in district that they can use. So we do get a huge discounted rate compared to what they would normally charge for other school districts, even though we are still increasing the rate by 100, it's still half of what other districts might pay for that same service. Track meets are typically in the six-hour timeframe range, too, to give you an idea there. And then we added two more event workers, different levels of hours for the events, so anywhere from a one-hour event to a six-hour event, and added some different rates there, based on how long they might be working. Final addition was just to the substitutes. At the very end, we added in facilities and transportation substitutes there as well, and base rate of their first step of the contract language.
Joel, is there a key somewhere that categorizes what falls into the one versus two versus three for these activities in athletics?
Yep, that's something that we're working on in the athletics office. So our secretary there, Shannon, will have a grid, so that she knows as they come in, if they tell her the event that they work, she'll know how to classify them from that standpoint, so.
What is a transportation substitute?
That's going to be for bus drivers. We are looking for substitute bus drivers to fill in on days where some of our bus drivers may be ill, and we need to call some people in. And we've had a couple of people leave the school district recently for other employment, and we're trying to talk to them and continually have conversations with them about filling in whenever we have an immediate need for a bus driver, so.
You answered all my questions in your description, so.
Yeah, that's...
I will move the pay rates as presented.
Second?
So we have a motion by Ms. Bracki, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and miscellaneous pay rates is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any donations today, so we will move on to advanced planning and legislative update, although we pretty much covered that.
We've already covered it. The only thing in that relation is, Mr. Picard and I are working on a possible December 18 study session with the mayor and the city council. And then also, and we don't have that to confirm yet, but we're hoping to confirm that if possible by the next board meeting. And then we are also working on that conversation around a February study session to work with our legislators, to share our legislative platform prior to the session beginning.
Okay, thanks. And we will move on to information and questions from the board.
I was told to thank the district for allowing some of the walking groups, some community ed, to use the high school. They say it's empty at night, there's lots of room, lots of halls, stairs. They think it's a great deal, and they want to thank us for it.
I've seen them in here when I've been in for advisory committee meeting, and they look like they're having a good time.
I had a couple of things. One, I think people probably have seen it in the 287 board brief emails that we all get, but there is a sort of organized visit for any member district board members to visit the South Education Center here in Richfield. So if you want to go, it's a really convenient one to be a part of, because you get to just meet the group here instead of going to Plymouth and then taking a bus from there. So that's Tuesday, December 5th at 9:00 a.m., if anyone is interested. I also, the wonderful presentation that we had last week from Centennial, I was able to go to the classroom presentation on Friday, and so just wanted to appreciate the fifth graders from Centennial and their teacher for inviting district staff families. Dr. Roby was there, along with some other staff members, and some really proud parents and little brothers and sisters. So it was a lot of fun to be able to be there for an hour. And then, it's a question, and it's related to a future meeting date, but I just wanted to check if we are still planning to just do the one meeting in January, or whether there is consideration of adding a second one. Or do we not know yet, and that's fine, too?
I think we'll have that decision for you. We're adding a second one.
Great.
So we'll have that date for the calendar. Yes, we're adding a second one, and we'll add that to the calendar at our December 4th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I had the curriculum advisory committee meeting this past week, and financial planning advisory committee meeting last week. So it was a busy week. FPAC was really excited about the passing of both referendums, and had a lot of questions, and some really, some really good conversations. So they were very supportive and really excited to participate in the committees and the planning that's going to be coming up in the next few months. On curriculum, we had a, one of the language arts teachers from the high school came, and we had approved purchase of some, a whole set of like more diverse books for high school students. So just to really expand the variety of books available. And she talked about how appreciative they were of those opportunities. And then she talked about how it really did kind of spiked interest, and there was a lot of conversation. So different kids choose different groups of books, and then their conversations about their books had other kids saying, "Ooh, I want to read that next." So it was a really positive response, and she was really nice of her to come back and give that positive feedback about the experience with those whole new sets of books, so.
Just, I'll speak for Board Member Cole, who's not here. So she and I were actually at the 9:30 picturing and writing on Friday.
Oh, really?
Yes, and so we enjoyed that. And so she was able to make it to that. It was a great opportunity for the students to share. And then just as we continue our statewide role in Reimagine Minnesota, and the AMSD conference on December 8th will be around that. And we have several board members and many district office people, and actually our student board member, Matthew Kifflue, will be attending. We are also going to be, and will be communicating out in the coming week, doing our own Reimagine Richfield. And Reimagine is really around gaining voice of students in that conversation, and gaining voices we don't always hear. So with a seven-student planning team, who is guiding our administration in this process, November 29th, we'll be hosting a Reimagine Richfield event at our high school, which will involve gathering voice from all 1,100 students within our high school. And the students were really excited to take this on. We're partnering with Paula Forbes, who led the work with Forbes Solutions with Reimagine Minnesota. And so I'm excited and interested to see how that plays out. Board members are obviously welcome. The important role I would want you to know from the students, because they've been very clear with me, our role as adults is to listen. We are there to listen, to note-take, and to allow them to have their voice amplified. And so while we will be able to be present, it is very important for us to take our role as note-takers, as listeners, very seriously for those who will be there and helping out with that event.
Is that all day, or?
That is all day.
What was the date on that against, Dave?
November 29th, so it's a week from Wednesday.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we will move on to future meeting dates. Our next meeting is Monday, December 4th, regular meeting of the Richfield School Board, and then the following, December 18th. And it sounds like we are working on a possible study session, which would start at 6:00. So I guess we'll have an update on that at the December 4th meeting. Any suggested or future agenda items?
Just as a reminder, at the request of Board Member Bracki, the team is putting together the implementation of behavior work that's going across our district within our schools, and then also sharing of some of the behavior data across our schools. And so we're hoping to have that ready for December 4th.
Okay. With no future agenda items, we could adjourn.
I move adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.